Good afternoon. We are calling the regular meeting of the Board of Regents of the Delmar College District to order at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, March 16, 2021. Due to COVID-related concerns, this meeting is being conducted by video and or teleconference in accordance with guidance from the offices of the Governor and Attorney General. Members of the public have been notified as to how they may view this meeting livestream or the audio of the meeting. I will now call the roll, so if Regents could please turn on your cameras. Regent Adami, are you present? Okay, Regent Adami is running a few minutes late. Regent Adami has arrived. Regent Avrat, we know is going to be a few minutes late, so we'll wait on her to join us. Regent Bennett?
I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Regent Garza?
Here.
Regent Hutchison?
I'm here.
We do not expect Regent Salinas to be with us today. Dr. Turner?
Yes, here.
Thank you. I'm Carol Scott. We do have a quorum and can conduct business. Thank you all very much. If you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And please join me in reading the Delmar College Vision Statement. Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities. Thank you all very much. Delmar College is streaming our live audio and video from the official Board of Regents meeting on the college's website in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute. The public was offered the opportunity to provide comments during this portion of the meeting for any item on the agenda. Dr. Eskamia, do we have any public comments?
There are no comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, sir. We will begin our board meeting today, as is our practice, with recognitions, and we have some information regarding our Next Generation Leadership Academy Class II. Ms. Tammy McDonald is going to present that for us.
Yes, thank you, Chair. It's my pleasure to present and recognize our Next Generation Leadership Academy Class II. I co-lead this initiative with Dr. Rito Silva. As we spoke this morning about our strategic plan and our KPIs, and one of those that we did mention was professional development. And this is the second class that we have partnered with Civitas Learning for a year-long program that they offer and coordinate with the college to support the development of future leaders in higher ed. They have multiple learning sessions over a year time period. Now, this class has definitely persevered because when the pandemic hit a year ago, we had to put a pause on their sessions so that everyone could regroup because they were used to meeting in person and the actual leaders for this program from Civitas would come to campus. So we had to put a pause on it, but we started it back up. So we did have the class graduate this past December. So they went through several sessions over various topics related to higher ed, and this is important because it's data-driven and it's research-based, but it's Delmar data. It's not just a case study on someone else. This is all Delmar information and Delmar data. So we're very, very happy that and very pleased because it gives them real information and helps them be better for their jobs and learn more about all the different functions across the college. So we have had that feedback from the different participants in these classes. They broke up into groups, and the groups presented on a topic. In this past December, the different groups presented their presentation, and their topic was the college response to the pandemic. And all the groups chose a different path, and they were all very, very good and informative and appreciated information and feedback on the college response to the pandemic. Now, I know it was challenging since we're in a virtual environment, but I'm going to, if you can bear with me, I'm going to read, there's 22 graduates from the Class II, so I'm going to read their names. It's Christine, and we do have some pictures of them. This is from their last session. Christine Mueller, Christy Urbic, Dorothy Pallotti, Lisa Palaskas, Sydney Zombi, Juan Saldana, Sushi Palamoni, Belinda De La Cruz, Christy Ampadon, Eliana Amaya, Jackie Landrum, Brittany McMan, Monica Cruz, Yasmeen Anderson, Nicole Ramon, Lisa Leal Garcia, Melissa Longoria Gunnin, Joanna Torres, Sarah Greer, Stephanie Robertson-Hart, Katrina Garcia, and Matthew Busby. Now, I also wanted to thank Letitia Wilson. She was a coordinator and mentor for Class II and for what she provided and provided some leadership to this class. Since, like I said, we could not meet in person, the class chose a spokesperson. So I would like to introduce you to Sydney Zombi. She is the spokesperson for Class II in GLA, and she was going to say a few words. Sydney?
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Ms. McDonald, for the introduction, the information about NGLA. I just wanted to take a minute to offer my appreciation to the executive team as well as our internal leaders who stop by, whether virtually or in person, to offer insight and instruction. And I also wanted to give you, just if I could be so bold, one small critique. I'm not sure that "Next Generation" is the most accurate descriptor of our group, and here's what I mean by that. During the course of NGLA, Joanna Torres became the college's lead counselor. Christine Mueller led our efforts in the Quality Enhancement Plan as part of our wildly successful SACSEOC reaffirmation. Nicole Ramon was recognized for exceptional work supporting students. And in our COVID response, Juan Saldana continued his invaluable work in e-learning. Matthew Busby helped to connect students to financial donors so they could continue their education. Sarah Greer helped to facilitate all the magic of working from home that Microsoft Teams makes possible. Melissa Longoria Gunnin helped students get connected to tutors to help them survive and thrive in an online environment. And Jackie Landrum helped to support the extraordinary efforts of the college to create the Risk Management Fund as response to COVID. I tell you all of this just to offer you a tiny snippet of the work of the group that I am immensely proud to be associated with. So thank you all again for supporting this wonderful program, and I hope that we can continue the important and impactful work of NGLA going forward.
Thank you, Sydney. And like I said, it's our pleasure to recognize Class II and to also give them the absolute recognitions that they need. They did great work, great job, and of course, like I said, in the extenuating circumstances that we had, they really stepped up. They stepped up, and they came up with a tremendous amount of information, and their presentations were wonderful. And we just want to thank all of you for participating and persevering and being part of this program. We appreciate it very much. Congratulations.
Round of applause, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. McDonald, and thank you, Sydney, for representing your class with us this afternoon. Several of us have been involved in, whether it's Leadership Corpus Christi or various leadership training programs in our professional organizations. So we certainly applaud Dr. Eskamia and the executive team for recognizing the opportunity to identify emerging leaders on our campus and to help bring you forward in the community college world. I am a firm believer in these kinds of leadership programs. You have to certainly have the technical expertise to do your job, but to grow into leadership positions requires mentoring and training and opportunity to showcase those talents and those interests. So I applaud you in this work, and I'm very happy to congratulate the group. I would love, at a future opportunity, when we are again together face-to-face, to host Class I and II and III as it's ongoing, for a luncheon activity or reception or something so that we can meet these emerging leaders face-to-face. I think that is important work. Are there other Regents who would like to offer congratulations? Great. Well, thank you again, Sydney, and for the rest of the class who is listening. Congratulations, and again, very thankful that you all persevered in your training. Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Next, we will have a recognition of Dr. Cynthia Bridges, who is our interim Dean in Arts and Sciences, and Dr. John Dehalcom will do that recognition for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair and esteemed Regents. I'm pleased to announce that Dr. Cynthia Bridges, interim Dean of Arts and Sciences, was elected to a second three-year appointment to the National Association of Schools of Music Commission, a community college accreditation, and we call it NASM, N-A-S-M. This is a great honor for Dr. Bridges. The three-member commission is elected by the 639-member body of NASM and is charged with assessing self-study reports and visitors' reports to determine whether applicant institutions meet the standards for accreditation as set forth by NASM. In addition to serving on the commission, Dr. Bridges also serves as an accreditation team chair during accreditation site visits and as a consultant to community colleges seeking accreditation through NASM. Community colleges accredited through NASM meet accreditation standards that are predominantly the same as four-year universities. This is meaningful to students in high schools in providing evidence that the Department of Music at Delmar College meets critical standards and objectives in cultivating the music educators, performers, composers, and sound engineers that are critically needed in the music workforce today. There are four community colleges, Amarillo, Delmar College, Lone Star, and Odessa, that hold this accreditation through NASM, and only 24 community colleges nationwide that hold this accreditation as well. Delmar College was the first community college awarded accreditation through the NASM in 1948, so we have quite a tradition here. Dr. Bridges is currently, as I mentioned, serving as interim dean of Arts and Sciences. She's a tenured associate professor and has served as department chair of music and has been teaching here for about 10 years. If you'd please join me in congratulating Dr. Bridges, I would appreciate it for this prestigious appointment. And I'd like to ask Dr. Bridges if she'd like to say a few words.
Thank you so much. Yes, I'd like to thank you, Regents, for your time this afternoon and for this recognition, but I'd also like to thank the administration for these opportunities to lead and serve in our professional associations as those opportunities come up. I think they're very important for faculty and for administrators to be able to offer those kinds of services because truly, for me, this has been a learning opportunity, not only in the field of music, but in enhancing skills, just like we want our students to enhance critical thinking and in those types of thought processes. This has certainly helped me in those areas. I would, Dr. Halcom shared some interesting facts that Delmar College was the very first community college to be accredited by the NASM, and we have held continuous accreditation since 1948. That sometimes feels like a weight of responsibility when I attend the conferences, but yet it also empowers me to help other community colleges pursue the same opportunities. One other fact that she hit on is that the importance of our accreditation means that we are meeting the same standards for the curriculum that we offer and for the experiences that we offer our students in performance and in other opportunities. We are meeting the very same standards that Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, who is an accredited NASM member, and Texas A&amp;M Kingsville, also another accredited NASM member, and all 639 member schools. We all meet these same accreditation standards. Now, the four-year institutions may meet some other accreditation standards, and they do meet others that deal with things in the third and fourth years, but regarding the first two years, we all meet the same standards. And so this identifies significant learning opportunities that we are equaling and sometimes even surpassing for our students who choose to come to Delmar, and we do it for less tuition dollars. So I think this is something really to be proud of, and we are coming into our very next site visit in March of 2022. So we're very excited to continue our relationship with the National Association of Schools of Music.
Dr. Bridges, congratulations, and thank you for your willingness to serve not only as a representative of Delmar College, but your profession in this important commission. There's a certain number of people of my generation who remember fondly going to solo and ensemble contests at Delmar College when we were in middle school and high school, band and choir. So I have to, when I think about the continuous certification since 1948, it really speaks to the college's commitment and the Regents' commitment to the Department of Music, and I think that is pretty incredible from my personal perspective and my family's perspective as well. The last official meeting we had before the pandemic broke was in February of last year, and we were able to take a tour of our new general academic and music building and see some of the fabulous resources that we have available for our students. So I look forward to the opportunity to hearing our students and watching our faculty show off their students again in the very, very near future. Congratulations again. Are there other Regents who would like to make a comment? If not, again, congratulations, Dr. Bridge. Oh, yes, another round of applause. Thank you, Dr. Bridges. And Dr. Halcom, will you talk to us about National Library Week?
Yes, Madam Chair and Regents. Thank you for taking time to celebrate National Library Week, which will occur April 4 through 10. We appreciate that support for our libraries here at Delmar College. Cody Gregg is here with us today, and he's served as dean of learning resources for about three years and has been very passionate about making libraries the best learning spaces possible. So I'm going to turn this over to Dean Gregg to give an overview of National Library Week, Library Workers' Day, and the activities for that week, and read the proclamation. Cody?
Thank you, Dr. Halcom. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Regents, Dr. Eskamia, and members of the Delmar College executive team. Thank you for taking this time this afternoon to recognize and celebrate the many vital contributions of libraries. National Library Week is an annual celebration at the beginning of April every year. This year, National Library Week, as Dr. Halcom said, will be celebrated on April 4 through 10. The theme for this year's National Library Week, "Welcome to Your Library," promotes the idea that libraries extend far beyond the four walls of a building and that everyone is welcome to use their services, an idea that is even more relevant and important given the events of the past year. During the pandemic, libraries have expanded services both in-face and online and resources to meet the needs of their users. Whether library patrons visit in person or online, libraries offer the vital services of access to technology, information, multimedia content, and educational programs. The Delmar College libraries will celebrate National Library Week with a variety of activities for 2021, including having patrons nominate and vote for their favorite books on social media, highlighting challenged and banned books, a virtual scavenger hunt, an online movie watch party, and virtual trivia games. In addition, the libraries will host a virtual open-mic event on Thursday, April 8. National Library Workers' Day will be celebrated on Tuesday, April 6. This is a day for library staff, users, administrators, and friends groups to recognize the valuable contributions made by all library workers. Now, it's my pleasure to read the proclamation of National Library Week for Delmar College. Whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and campuses, serving their communities; whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of belonging and community; whereas libraries are critical to student success, retention, and persistence; whereas librarians are trained professionals, helping people of all ages and backgrounds find and interpret information they need to live, learn, and work in an increasingly complex and challenging world; whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all; whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access to technology, multimedia content, and educational programs; whereas in times of crisis, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in-person and virtually; whereas to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons; whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all; whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of their communities; whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Delmar College Board of Regents proclaims National Library Week April 4 through 10, 2021. During this week, we encourage all residents to visit their library online to access resources and services. Because of you, libraries transform lives and communities.
Thank you very much.
You can also celebrate National Library Week 2021 by sharing what you love about your libraries by using the hashtag #MyLibraryIs on Instagram and Twitter. On behalf of the Delmar College Libraries, staff, and faculty, thank you for your support. We truly appreciate all you do that enables us to support our students in their educational journeys. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dean Gregg. We appreciate all that you're doing. Congratulations. That's right, a round of applause. Dr. Turner, thank you for reminding me. Thank you very much for that. And we thank you and all that you and your staff do to provide resources for our students. Libraries have changed so much, and the work that you all do to keep them accessible to all of our students is so, so very important. Dr. Eskamia? I thought you had something to say. I apologize. You caught my peripheral vision. Are there any other Regents who have any comments? Again, congratulations and proud National Library Week in April.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Halcom, for your presentation today.
Thank you for giving us the time for the recognitions. Very much appreciated.
Of course. Thank you. Bring more back next meeting. We will now move on to the Student Success Report portion of our meeting, and Dr. Eskamia will introduce Dr. Rito Silva.
Thank you, Regents. What we've experienced over the past several board meetings has been a tremendous amount of dialogue, and just today's board meeting has been another great example of great information going back and forth. This kind of discussion, in-depth discussion about our college and our students is important. And so we pull nuggets from these discussions and bring them back to you on a regular basis. Not only am I making my little notes here about future discussions, but Dr. Silva is coming to you with one of those nuggets that we pulled from a previous discussion, and it's all around student loan debt and as it relates to Delmar College. We find it a success that our students, what they experience here, I won't steal your thunder, Dr. Silva, so go ahead and take over and talk to us about the student loan debt at Delmar College for our students.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Regents, and Dr. Eskamia. In light of the recent national conversation on student debt, we thought we'd give you some data on where Delmar College students stood in regards to the average transfer and average student debt in comparison to our cohort and the state average. As you know, student debt is also a key component in the State 60 by 30 Initiative. Next slide, please. The average student debt, as defined by the Texas Higher Education Coordinator Board, is the average debt for students who graduate from Delmar College and transfer to a four-year institution. As you can tell by this table, Delmar College students had the least debt in two out of three years compared to our cohort, and even though one year of 2019 where North Central was lower, we just missed it by $443. Delmar College students also carried less debt than the state average listed on the very last line of this table for each of the last three years. Next slide, please. In regards to average student debt, which includes all identifiable debt for all students, Delmar College students had the lowest debt than anyone in our cohort for the last three years. Our students also carry significantly less debt than the state average for all three years. I would like to take this time to thank our financial aid office for being proactive in giving our students alternative options of financial aid rather than loading them down with student loans. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Dr. Silva. Are there questions regarding this report?
Yes, can I ask? Let me make sure I understand. This is the average debt for those who receive a degree or certificate? Is that, if somebody occurs dead and then doesn't graduate, is that part of this or not?
It is on the average student debt. On the first one, a region, it was for the transfer, the ones completed a degree here and transferred over, but this second one takes all students into account.
This one has all of those. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for sharing this with us. We appreciate it. Dr. Silva?
Thank you.
Dr. Eskamia will now give us his campus-wide update under his president's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regents, as you know, Governor Abbott lifted the statewide mandate for face coverings and increased capacity for businesses to 100% effective March 10. The governor also acknowledged that COVID-19 has not disappeared, and he strongly encouraged everyone to continue to wear face coverings, practice social distancing, and exercise personal vigilance against the virus. Out of an abundance of caution and concern for our safety, for our students, employees, and community, Delmar College continues to require everyone visiting our campuses to wear face coverings and observe all COVID-19 health and safety protocols that are in place. I removed my mask for purposes of communicating this, so please excuse me for this opportunity to, for this time, to take my mask off. College administration is reviewing recommendations from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and other health and governmental agencies, authorities, and we will adjust our guidelines and operations at the appropriate time. What do I mean by that? Well, we know that some of our colleagues across the state and nation are shifting gears in the middle of the semester. We do not encourage or support that sort of move. We think we will make some more calls at the end of the semester. We find making shifts in midstream is too disruptive to instruction, our students and our faculties, our students, everyone's lives for that matter. At this time, we remain in Phase Two of our Return to Campus Plan. The college is closed to the public with limited access for instruction and testing primarily. As we probably, as I'm sure every one of you all felt, the cold last month, that winter freeze created hardships for many of our students and employees, and many of these individuals are still dealing with the effects from that tremendously difficult time. Thanks to everyone for your patience and fortitude during the unexpected crisis that halted our operations for almost a week. Emergency funds are still available for the Delmar College Foundation, from the Delmar College Foundation, as students continue their studies. If anyone knows a student in need and that we're particularly affected by this moment in our semester or this period of our semester, please refer them to the Delmar College website where they can find the online application. Also know that we are reaching out to the student body as well. The freeze caused considerable damage to buildings on both east and west campuses. Hardware associated with the water systems had to be replaced, including valves, pipes, backflow preventers, and many of our buildings had water damage due to broken pipes and valves, as you might expect. Landscaping, of course, took a big hit, was also affected across the campuses. The total cost of this damage is still being assessed, and we continue to reel from that very difficult time here at the college. On a brighter note, during the freeze, the emergency training building, or otherwise known as the FEMA Dome, was also turned over to the city of Corpus Christi as a temporary shelter for those individuals in our community who needed a place to come and to who needed a place to get, to come and to get out of the cold. I want to thank our teams that were, that have been working nonstop. Spring break didn't exist to a lot of people, and we're just, in addition to spring break, this week when, when the, when the, when the storm hit, has just turned our, our, our schedule into a 24/7 kind of situation, much like we've seen with hurricanes and that sort of thing. And, and I just want to thank all of our, of our team members who are out there just continually serving the college and making sure that we're up and operating. And we are, we are making sure to take care of them as well. So this next topic has to do with the federal government's stimulus packages out there. So I want you all to know there's, there's been three, okay, and we just realized one less than a week ago. But the first one, as you may recall, goes back to March 2020, and that was the CARES Act, which yielded the college at approximately $4 million. And all of those, and we're going to talk about those here in a little bit, so, in a staff report, so I'm not going to steal that thunder because we were asked to bring that information forward, and we were prepared to do that. The second program was called the CERSA, C-C-R-R-S-A. And it was the, it was passed last month. And, and this was the one that we reported to you all last month, and that it, it has actually yielded us closer to $11 million. Of course, a big portion of that is going to go to students, and we're, we're still unpacking some of that, some of those details for that, for that portion of, of the, of the, for that particular stimulus package. And just five, five days ago, we realized that, that President Biden has put forth his first stimulus package, and, and it was on March 11th that he signed into law the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. It is a $1.9 trillion, trillion-dollar economic stimulus package designed to help the country recover from economic and health effects of COVID-19 pandemic and the ongoing recession. From those funds, $39.6 billion will go, go directly to colleges and universities to support the overwhelming costs that institutions and students face in dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic. We're still unpacking the details on this, on this particular stimulus package, but it appears that Delmar College will receive a substantially, substantial amount of money that will, that is likely to double the previous, so be in the neighborhood of double the CERSA package and approaching somewhere around $18 million. Yes, $18 million. Of course, much of that will be going to students. We, we are unpacking this. We are learning about this. As you speak, we're, the rules, if you will, for these particular dollars are still being understood and, and, and sorted through. And just know that, again, as, since this was the third packet, and it's still, we're still trying to understand the first, or the second packet, the second stimulus package, we will be coming back to you with presentations more fully on these dollars and seeking to interact with the board to see how, how these dollars will be best utilized as it will affect the overall budget of the college significantly. They will have, these dollars will have relatively short timelines, and so we will need to be, I, I will caution everybody that we will need to be as nimble and as quick as possible to spend appropriately, spend and positively affect, spend these dollars and positively affect our students' experience here at the college. As I mentioned before, Regents, Delmar College is working with Driscoll Children's Hospital to become a future COVID-19 vaccination site. Driscoll representatives have been meeting with Delmar College representatives recently to assess the proposed walk-in vaccination site on West Campus. This plan is still in development. Still many more details are being hammered out, and so stay tuned. But we continue to make progress towards becoming a site. Two things, once we're a site, it, by the way, I understand it right now, that it'll be a repeat site over time until our community, and we'll be participating as long as they're supplying us with, with the vaccines to, to, to achieve that number in the community that satisfies the CDC. And so we are, we are working very closely again with Driscoll Children's Hospital. One other reminder that our students have been helping, our EMT students, certainly our nursing and healthcare students, I think our CNAs and a few others, other different groups of students are out there working with the county and the city and other places all throughout the community, and there are many, many of our students and employees who are out there volunteering to with this very, very important life and safety work with vaccines. So hats off to those students, and thank you for that. Shifting gears a little bit, I, I want, I want to give you all a bit of a teaser and heads up about a survey, again, that has come from these discussions, that these robust discussions that we've been having. I was talking to Chairwoman Scott a little earlier about this survey, and what I wanted to tell you all is that we, last month, we began sending emails to students who were previously enrolled at the college but did not return for the spring semester to ascertain the factors that have influenced their decision not to return. The survey was conducted by our Office of Institutional Research along with our Office of Admissions and Student Services. We're pleased to receive notice, I am pleased to receive notice that we've, that we have realized 550 responses. These data are being sorted and analyzed, and we will be bringing them to the April Board Meeting, again, for further discussion. So we're, we're, we're doing everything we can. Again, we're, as we're going through this situation, we're trying to analyze and, 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 and learn things so as we, so as to be better prepared for the next semester. This has been devastating, devastating time to all of our families, for sure. And it certainly has impacted their educational experience, and is, and we're no different than anyone else across the nation, unfortunately. Just another notice on, as a heads up on a, I want everyone to know that the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board's reskilling grant was announced on March 4th by, of course, the Coordinating Board to Delmar College and A&amp;M Corpus Christi, that we will be receiving in partnership with the University a Texas Reskilling Support Fund Grant for $650,000. This grant will be part of the CARES Act dollars. It's one of those grant opportunities will, will provide tuition and fees for students attending the two institutions to reskill and earn credentials to work towards the targeted occupations in the coastal bend. At Delmar College, this includes programs such as construction, welding, healthcare business, and which all will help students learn skills quickly and earn certificates and associate's degrees in high-demand fields. There was a pot of about $46.5 million that was established through these, these efforts, and for us to partner with our, our brothers and sisters down the street at the university is a wonderful thing. And that $650,000 will be much appreciated by those students, I am sure. That concludes my report, Madam Chair. I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Eskamia. Regents, do you have any questions? Yes, Dr. Turner?
Yes, I had, I guess, a couple things. When my husband and I got our COVID test, it was two Delmar students that gave us our test, our shot, and they were very cute. And our truck was very large, and can you please open up the door? I can't reach you. And they were very nice and very curious and very sweet girls that were giving us our shot about a month ago. And $650,000 on that partnership, now are these for just like continuing ed courses, like the construction and welding and healthcare? Are they also going to also apply to any program that we're offering in skills? Or is it, and is it offered to all students or just those that are wanting to be kind of re-skilled?
So it's gonna, it's a, it's a pretty broad, these federal dollars have very broad topics, but, Lenora, are you? I think you were point on this one. Do you know that answer? I, I, I think I know the answer, but I don't want to guess.
Oh, yes, Dr. Eskamia, Regent Turner. The grant specifies that the programs have to be short-term, and so the monies really have to go to programs that, at Delmar anyway, A&amp;M has different ones, of course, but at Delmar, they have to be pretty short-term and generally less than six months to get someone the credential and get them out to work.
It sounds like it's all the above.
Identified programs, but they are credit and continuing education.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Lenora.
Any other questions for Dr. Eskamia? Thank you all. During Regent comments, I wanted to give you all an update on the Community College Association of Texas Trustee Activities. As the legislature has begun meeting, the Texas Association of Community Colleges and CAT have been testifying and providing input into the legislative process. I was able to go to Austin on February 24th and testify on behalf of CAT in front of the Senate Finance Committee. And then CAT was represented by our Chair-elect and Chair of our Legislative Committee, Robert Glazer, who's also Chair of the Houston Community College Board at the House Appropriations Committee. So CAT has been a part of those activities. We right now have a annual conference scheduled in June. We are surveying our college presidents and, and making some determinations on whether or not we're going to push that back a couple of months to August with the anticipation that we will have a hybrid conference regardless of whether it's in June or August or early September. We will have a hybrid conference offering opportunities for folks to participate in person if they are comfortable doing so, but then also providing live streaming and some Zoom meeting opportunities for those who wish to participate remotely as well. So you'll be hearing more information about the CAT Conference as it comes forward. Do you have any questions about the CAT activities? I call it CAT. Some people call it CCAT. It gets all kinds of names, but our Texas Trustee Association. All right. Moving on, then, we will look at staff reports, and our first is going to be a report regarding our property tax collection assessment. And Mr. Raul Garcia is going to present that for us. Mr. Garcia?
Yes, so, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to ask you to transition into the next slide, please. So let me begin with property taxes represents one of three major revenue streams for the college. In today's presentation, John and I will go over a limited number of data points to assess the financial implication on the college property tax revenue against a backdrop of economic volatility stemming from the COVID-19 pandemic. The presentation includes the district's property composition and a limited number of financial indicators to frame a narrative around the collectability of this year's 2021 planned tax revenue at $58.2 million. We will start with a one-year lookback of the economic activity that has caused financial stress in certain sectors of the economy on the next slide, please. Thank you. The V-shaped curve illustration on this slide fairly depicts the economic activity over the last 14 months. The health and safety protocols such as the shelter-in-place, remote work, business lockdowns, capacity restrictions, and social distancing that were introduced in the second quarter of 2020 significantly shifted consumer spending, causing a slowdown in economic activity. Sectors that are dependent on face-to-face contact experiences significant, experience significant revenue declines. For example, the leisure and hospitality industry was hardest hit with a 46% decline in revenue for that short period, followed by professional services and manufacturing with a decline in revenue of 20% and 19%, respectively. In addition, the oil industry experienced a significant decline in revenues in the second quarter of 2020, caused in part by reduced consumer activities such as leisure and business air travel and commute to work. This resulted in a decline in oil consumption by as much as 30% in April to 114.7 million barrels per day from prior year's high of 20.5 million barrels per day. The decrease in the oil consumption paired with high oil inventory levels at the time caused a sharp decline in the West Texas Intermediate Crude Oil Market Price. The price per barrel diminished in the second quarter of 2020 by 50% to $29 from a high of $10 in the previous quarter. This contributed in part to the weakening of the district's labor market, resulting in a high unemployment rate in April at 15.7% from a low of February's 44.4 unemployment rates. The decline in financial activity added downward pressures to the state tax revenues, resulting in a decline of 10% from March to April 2020. It was around this, it was around the first half of the, of last year that the state was estimating a revenue shortfall by as much as $4.6 billion. The state took immediate action by reducing planned expenses by 5%. Community colleges were excluded from this directive. There's now indication that the economy has rebounded. As reported by the Workforce Solutions of Coastal Bend, the district's unemployment rate for the month of November improved to 10%. The West Texas Intermediate Crude Oil Price Per Barrel closed yesterday at around $64 from last year's low of $29 per barrel. This is attributed in part to the increase in consumer mobility and engagement driven in part by the vaccine rollout, the reopening of business, and fiscal policy such as the CARES Act, and not to mention the near-zero interest rate monetary policy. I recognize that this has been a grim report. However, there are certain categories of the housing sector that have performed better than other sectors of the economy. So we will begin the discussion on property on the next slide. By the way, do you have any questions so far? I'm sorry about that. Okay, good. So presented in this slide is the district's property composition, which I think helps frame the financial data points that we will shortly go over. As reported by the New Westsus County Appraisal Office, the district's property valuation for the 2020 years, $37.7 billion, which is a $6.6 billion increase from 2016's valuation of $31.1 billion. This is an annual average valuation increase of 5.3%. Single-family condominiums, commercial, and industry categories experienced the largest growth during this period. When considering the district's property tax portfolio, single-family homes and condos represent the largest property category with 41.5%, followed by commercial and industry properties with 27.6%. If there are no questions, we will now transition to a limited number of financial indicators, beginning with single-family housing. Okay, thank you. The single-family housing, both nationally and in Corpus Christi, has performed better than other sectors of the economy. This is attributed in part to the low-interest rate environment driven by the near-zero interest rate federal monetary policy. As reported by the National Association of Home Builders, the average interest rate cost to finance a home over a 30-year period at the end of May 2020 fell to 3.25% from the previous year, 4%. The average risk interest rate cost to finance a home over a 15-year period as of the end of May of 2020 dropped to 2.73% from the previous year's 3.54%. What does this mean? The benefits of the lower borrowing costs is what's driving up the housing, housing demand, causing a shortage in the housing supply. This helps explain in part why the average sales price sharply scaled up in the middle of the pandemic from $252,000 in May to $290,000 in July. As you can see here in this chart, or is like the third part of the graph, you see that huge scaling up. Again, it's just individuals just taking advantage of the low-interest environment or anything else. Yeah, I also have a few more data points as reported by the Texas Realtors Data Relevance Project. Single resident housing units sold scaled up scaled up in 2020 to 6,985 from prior years, 5,809. And this is the Corpus Christi market. The average sales price rose in December to 282,834 or 17.4% from 241,000 in the previous, from a year ago. The average price per square footage in December rose to $159.75, once again, 17% from 136,000 a year ago. The amount of days to sell your house is down to 102 days in December relative to 116 days a year. Again, there's a quick churning occurring on the sales of properties. Lastly, the number of active listings decreased in December to 1,311, 2,184 from a year ago. There are no questions. We will transition into the next slide. So the economic slowdown has caused financial hardship for a number of homeowners, as evidenced in the national mortgage lynchance rates. The national mortgage lynchance rates nearly doubled in the second quarter of 2020 at 8.22% from the first quarter at 4.36%. What is interesting is that during the same period, loan foreclosure rates diverged from the mortgage delinquency rates, reaching historical lows at half of 1% at year-end. This is by design, driven in part by the federal government's fiscal policy. Specifically, the CARES Act includes financial relief for borrowers with federal-backed mortgage loans. Homeowners facing hardship can apply with their lender for a loan forbearance that includes temporary postponement or reduced mortgage payments with higher monthly payments at the end of the forbearance period. In addition, there is a foreclosure moratorium that temporarily prevents and suspends all foreclosure actions and ceases all evictions relating to foreclosures. If there are no questions, John Johnson will lead us into the next slide to talk about the financial implication to the college on the data points we discovered. Mr. Johnson, I believe we had some minor technical difficulties. I think we have to transition into Plan B.
He's on. Is he muted, Mr. Johnson?
Okay, so let's execute Plan B. Give me a few minutes. We're going to patch him in via iPhone.
Can you all hear me?
Okay, thank you, John. Can everybody hear John Johnson?
Can you hear me?
Okay, I see a lot of nodding. It's a go, John. Thank you.
I apologize that I have moved from one residence to the other during the last week, and I've been having issues with my internet. Anyway, with that being said, first off, I want to make sure that you all can hear clearly.
We're good, John. Thank you.
Okay. The slide you're looking at presents the collections of property taxes as a percentage of budget through the month of February for the last 11 fiscal years. During a normal year, the college expects collections to fall somewhere between 94% and 95% to remain to be collected during the final six months of this fiscal year in order to make budget. Taking a closer look at the slide, you will note that during years 15 and 16, the collection rate fell below that normally expected. As some people may remember, this was due to large refunds made to a major industry settlement of a lawsuit contesting the taxable valuation set by the appraisal district. In fiscal year 2015, the college refunded $934,000 as part of this settlement. In fiscal year 16, the college was impacted by the amount of $945,000 due to the fact that the college had already set its tax rate for the upcoming fiscal year prior to the lawsuit being settled. So in those two years, you'll see that fall below the 94% expected rates. During the current fiscal year, collections have fallen to 92.57%. The college is, we've been in close contact with the Nueces County Tax Collector, and we are both in agreement that the reduction is directly due to business closures, reduction in sales revenue, and bankruptcies caused by the current pandemic. Should collections remain at the current level, the college could see a loss in revenue somewhere between $875,000 and $1.45 million. Now, I've reviewed some of the collections we received during the first, the first half of March, and the collections have come up somewhat, but I'm still, I'm still in the process of trying to determine whether the collection rate will come back to a reasonable level. I still foresee some sort of loss, but I am relatively certain we won't get anywhere near the $1.45 million. Are there any specific questions on that slide?
No questions, John. Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing, I'll go on to the next slide. On top of the normal, you know, loss in collections, we have some property tax refunds that have been kind of lingering out there based on lawsuits that have been settled by different petrochemical companies over the last few fiscal years. Potential 2018 refunds from contested property valuations from industries could total as much as $1.5 million. According to the tax collector, in 2019, the industries involved in those lawsuits paid taxes at a reduced valuation rate. Therefore, no refunds would be issued, if he is mistaken, which I don't believe he is. But if he is mistaken, those refunds for 2019 could reach as high as $1.25 million. In addition, during the, for the current fiscal year, three industries have submitted protests on their valuations. One has settled a potential loss of revenue for these protests totaling $1.25 million. Now, the dollar amounts that I'm giving you does not include any potential penalty and interest that could be requested as part of the refunds. As you might remember, the Texas Supreme Court ruled, finalized their ruling in regards to the Pierce extending into the Bay, that lawsuit has been completed. We know that there is $409,000 in taxes to, for refunds from 2008 to the present. There's current discussions with these industries to reduce or forego the penalty and interest, which could exceed $200,000. In addition, there were two industries, which either of which filed lawsuits or have requested refunds. And those amounts could, if they subsequently put themselves within those lawsuits, the refunds to those entities could be somewhere in the neighborhood of $77,000. And of course, again, both industries have not indicated they are requesting refunds at this time. Are there any questions on this slide?
No questions. Thank you, John. So everyone, what you just experienced is Del Mar's agility to overcome any obstacles that the pandemic has imposed on us. So, so thank you, John. So I'm going to close out the presentation with these final comments. And so, based on the information presented today, there is a downward pressure in our property tax revenue with a worst-case estimate of about $4.5 million. The upside is that the college has been planning for this unthinkable. The college fiscal current, fiscal current plan adds financial stability that includes leveraging the 2021 budget contingency valued at $1.6 million, leveraging reduced spending, which is trending at about half a million dollars for the five months ending January. There's also the possibility of instituting tighter expense controls for the remaining part of the year. And as Mark mentioned earlier, leveraging the federal HERF supplemental and the American Recovery Plan funding with an estimated value to the institution, to the institution specifically, not excluding the student financial piece of $18.4 million. Lastly, the college recently added protection that will help manage economic downside of the pandemic by establishing the Risk Management Reserve Fund valued at $8.6 million. This amount is based on a simplified stress test assessment that was performed a year ago to protect against the following: state funding reductions with an estimated value of $3.3 million; property tax collection reductions to the tune of $2.4 million; health and safety costs to the tune of $1.5 million; increase in cost of instructions to operate in a social distancing environment, that's $800,000. And then there's the insurance catastrophic loss that ranges from $250,000 to $1 million altogether. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. President, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. I do have a follow-up, and I'll invite additional Regents to ask questions as well. Dr. Eskamia, I am wondering if, six months into our fiscal year budget, with this information, and not being sure, the final, I think we've just gotten the final guidance on the CURSA supplemental federal aid. We certainly don't have guidance yet on the American Rescue, American Recovery Act, right? So, and then our own risk reserve fund. So I'm wondering if we need to have a pretty thorough current fiscal year budget review, and if we need to look at any budget revisions. Do we really need to understand? I think the board really needs to understand what these lost revenues are COVID-related. The side that's still up, the property tax refund, is not COVID-related, but they are issues that we've been planning for and saving for and aware of. But how do we potentially use the federal dollars if necessary, coupled that with our decline in enrollment and what were those budget projections? So I think we, and this is very helpful information today, but to have a really thorough budget review, current fiscal year budget review discussion in April, I think is going to be very critical for us.
The timing is just right, actually, for those things. We are actually already preparing for next month's budget, excuse me, board meeting and budget meetings. In fact, I was reviewing some, a presentation yesterday evening around these dates and times to set this conversation up. So-
So there are specific action items that you need from the board in terms of any budget revision decisions? Again, doing it now before we are at the end of the fiscal year, but if there's almost, I hate to use the word reconciliation because that takes on another connotation at the federal level, but do we need a reconciliation?
Yeah, and really, it is, I mean, when, what these are, the reason why these are kind of, we're, they're large, very, very large grants is really what they are. They're one-time dollars, although they've come in threes. And so, we will have that presentation ready. Again, we're already, we're already getting into the budget season. It's always budget season, is what we say around here. But we're especially in the, in the planning, we're deep into the planning cycle of it all. And so, next month, we will, we will begin putting all of these resources on the table to begin, at least, at this point, understanding where they all are. Again, my caution for everybody, for all of us, is that, again, they come with short fuses, so to speak. They come with very quick turnarounds. These are huge amounts of dollars that have got to be expended within certain timelines so as not to realize penalties. And I think, and that being said, I think the previous administration's rules on that is different, are different than current administrations. I'll just go ahead and add that for consideration. But that being said, we're already preparing, and I've already reviewed, again, a part of a presentation last night. Raul, do you have any comments about getting ready to bring, to bring the, these grants forward to the board and for discussion?
Yes, what I'd like to add is that, you know, Miguel Cardona has now been recently appointed to the leadership role of the Secretary of Education. And so, I'm sure that, you know, he just got one of the, or probably has already been planning for the new funding stream that was just recently introduced as of last week. And so, I'm sure he has his team coming together and proposing guidelines. So to come up with a presentation in April to discuss the possibilities of how to leverage the federal dollars may be a little bit too soon. If anything, we can probably develop a framework with certain assumptions that the expenses that we are looking to leverage may be allowable. But until Mr. Miguel Cardona and his team issues a specific guidelines, we will, you know, there would not be a very definitive plan. It would definitely be a moving target more than anything else.
And we'll, we'll address that, we'll address it as such, as a moving plan, as a kind of a multiple, a multiple-layered conversation. That's not going to happen in one board meeting. But we will, we will definitely bring what we have.
Yeah, I will also add the good news about the second supplemental funding. What we know is that some of those dollars can be used for operating losses. What's still a big question mark is what, how do you define operating losses? And so, I know that as the prior administration was walking out, one of the questions was whether or not we can leverage those dollars for property tax collection losses. And I have not heard anything since, since then. That was about, about two, three months ago when that question was proposed to a representative from the Department of Education. So I'm sure they're still digesting the Act and synthesizing the information and probably coming up with a little bit more clarity in their guidelines.
But we will bring what we have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other Regent questions? All right.
Thank you.
Hearing none, we will move on to our CARES Act, CARES Act update, the first stimulus package. Mr. Garcia, are you going to cover that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I will ask to transition into the next slide, please. Thank you. So in framing today's COVID-19 grant funding presentation, Dr. Wilson and Dr. Silva and myself will provide grant information and describe the college operating activities for administering colleges CARES Act funding. I'm sorry for this, but I think it may help with revisiting fiscal year 2020 a little bit once again, to provide some perspective. So fiscal year 2020 was a period of transformation in which the college demonstrated characteristics of agility, responsiveness, and nimbleness. The college was off to a great start at the beginning of the year with a new strategic plan, a new general academic music building, and the modernization of the Energy Technology and Workforce Development Center buildings. Forward motion was immediately interrupted with the National Pandemic Emergency Declaration on March 13. on March 13. In response to the downside of the pandemic, the federal government approved the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, or commonly known as the CARES Act, on March 27th of 2020. College's fortune of the CARES Act award totaled $4.1 million. This includes student share funding for $1.9 million, institutional share funding for $1.9 million again, and minority-serving institution share for $247,000. At the onset of the award, the college developed a framework for decisions on how to spend the funds with the backup of compliance, operations, the college's strategic plan, and innovation. We'll go over the separate, on a separate slide, the CARES Act expense approved request form that brings all four of these elements together. Excuse me. Respect to the compliance, the U.S. Department of Education issued a set of spending guidelines. The student share provides funding to students with significant financial needs to be used for housing, force material, technology, healthcare, and childcare. The institutional share in the MSI is related to operating expenses, including lost revenue, technology costs associated with the transition to distance education, faculty and staff training, excuse me, incurred by institutions. We will shortly report further details on the college's grant spend. There are no questions, and we'll transition to the next slide. Thank you. I want to start with a quote by W. Edward Demme, who is recognized for his continuous improvement cycle model of plan, perform, monitor, and improve in the field of quality management. And he said, "The most valuable currency of an organization is the initiative and the creativity of its members." The college built a cross-functional team driven around the framework of compliance, operation strategy, and innovation. The team included individuals possessing deep technical expertise in their respective field of operations. Committee included Christina Gonzalez and Dr. Larry Lee for their expertise with grant compliance. We also included Dr. Rita, Dr. Rita Silva, Joseph Reese, and Mary McQueen for their expertise in student support and services. We also have August Alfonso for his expertise in information technology. And we also added Dr. Christina Wilson, who has been instrumental for driving the college's strategic plan. Combined talent pool facilitated the innovative use of CARES Act funding. And so, Dr. Silva, if you can please take the lead in talking more about the framework for the distribution of the student share of the grant funding.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Next slide, please. First, we're going to talk, like Mr. Garcia said, on how we did the student assistance, financial assistance. So in accordance with the guidance set forth by the former Secretary of Education, we distributed the allocated funds early into the needy students based on what we call their expected family contribution, or EFC. The lower the EFC, the more need for the student. So in Phase 1, we distributed funds of $500 to full-time students and $300 to part-time students with an EFC of 0 to 2,000. Then we dispersed $300 to students with a financial aid form on file with an EFC of 2,000 plus. In Phase 2, we had an application process where students applied for funds. We continued funding at the $500 level for full-time students and 300 level for part-time students. So for this phase, we assisted 103 students in Phase 2, which mainly took place in the summer. In Phase 3, for the fall and spring, we continued the application process, and we assisted 1,181 students in Phase 3. So I'm proud to report that we were able to use all the funds allocated to us for student distribution and assisted 4,812 students. Next slide, please.
Dr. Silva, I have a quick question. Were those 4,800-plus students unique students, or were some of them multiple grant recipients in each of the semesters?
Great question. No, ma'am, they're unique students.
Thank you.
So on the college operational side?
I'm sorry, Mr. Garza has a question.
Oh, yes, yes, sir, Regent Garza.
Yeah, just a quick question. I like the way that you set that up in Phase 1, 2, and 3. Is that something that was mandated by the government in terms of the CARES Act or the CARES money, or is that something that the college rolled out and set up in its own phases?
Thank you so much, Regent Garza, for that question. It is very much, the committee decided that, and I'll tell you later on, I know other schools went the exact same way. I'm not sure they, you know, how they got the information, but the committee decided on its own. We got a letter from Betsy DeBolle saying, "We want to go ahead and throw the largest net as possible and help out as many students." So this is what the committee's response was to her letter, to be able to help the needy student with the widest net as possible. And so we did a Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3 approach.
Well, kudos to the committee in the way that you all set that up. I think that you all got the money out as fast and as efficiently as possible, and I think that helped the students a lot. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Regent. On this slide here, regents, we want to talk about the college operational side, how we use the institutional funds. So the committee then set priorities very early in this process. So the priorities were number one, health and safety, that's always number one. Dr. Eskamia also would come to our meetings and emphasize health and safety was always going to be number one. Number two was instructional, and number three was going to be technology. So a request form was sent out to the college community asking for faculty and staff to submit their requests. Each request had to meet the grant's criteria, which meant it had to assist with expanding remote learning, or it had to help with building IT capacity to support such learning, or train faculty and staff to be able to operate effectively in remote environments. So now, Dr. Wilson will now discuss how we link those fundings to our strategic plan.
Thank you, Dr. Silva. As part of the request form, the requesters had to align their need to the college's strategic plan. In total, 98 forms were submitted from Delmar College faculty and staff. The process of reviewing each form was truly an extensive process. Each request form had to be approved by the appropriate dean and executive team member. Subsequently, each request was reviewed thoroughly by the CARES Act committee. In many cases, additional information was requested so that the committee could have an in-depth understanding of how the technology or equipment would support students. The majority of requests were approved, with a few denials issued to request that not, that did not meet the approval criteria. Next slide, please. Of the requests that were approved by the committee, over $1 million was allocated for instructional expenses. $279,000 was allocated for health and safety supplies. $36,000 was allocated for student service expenses, and $523,000 was allocated to technology. On the right-hand side of the slide, you'll see a breakdown of how these expenses were allocated according to the strategic plan goal that they're aligned with. Let's look at a breakdown of the technology that was purchased. Over 700 items of computer equipment, 1,000 audio equipment items, 300 AV and camera items, and 400 special equipment items were purchased. Please note that a significant amount of the college's health and safety expenses were covered by FEMA, with additional purchases subsidized by the CARES Act. In summary, the college successfully leveraged CARES Act funding to get us through a very critical time. Students greatly needed the direct financial assistance both at the start of the pandemic and as the pandemic persisted. And of course, our college needed the additional funding to support operations as we transitioned to functioning almost completely online. We would like to thank the CARES Act committee for the time that they dedicated to designing and implementing a fair process that truly was student-focused. The committee met weekly for multiple hours per week to ensure that we were leveraging the funding efficiently and effectively to best meet the students' needs and the college's needs. And thank you to the faculty, staff, and leadership of the college for their support of this important work. This concludes our presentation, and we will pause for any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much for this comprehensive report. It's very, very helpful for us to see the allocations and to understand the detail behind, again, that, that initial Recovery Act. So this sets a good precedent and gives us, I assume you're going to be following similar kinds of processes for the remaining stimulus packages as well, is that correct, Dr. Eskamia?
Yes, we're going to, we have lessons learned, certainly, and this is a relatively, as big an amount as it is, it's relatively small. But it's still very, very difficult to move quickly within a timeframe given to, to expend these dollars. So lots of lessons learned, we're going to get, we're going to be more efficient. We will be listening to the college, we'll be acting according to the strategic plan. But, and the team will tell you, back in October, I said, I evaluated things, I said, "Team, we need to move fast, we need to move fast, and I need a plan by January how these are going to be distributed." Because I think yesterday was the deadline, that if I'm not mistaken, or the week before, it was March, it was this month that these funds had to be expended. And so the team got together over, over the latter part of the fall semester and put a plan together, expedited things, and again, I think that was part of our lessons learned about how to, how to move more efficiently. These dollars and the challenges are going to be even bigger, good problems to have, but I look forward to using what we've learned to expedite those funds for our students and employees.
Again, I think because of the nature of the kind of institution we are and the good work that you've done, the institutional support can, can lag behind the direct student assistance. So I think, if, in my opinion, if you're going to prioritize a time-intensive and a, a, a quick response scenario, it would be towards our students and making sure that they have the direct assistance that they need.
Yeah, the dollars are already earmarked out there, there's proportions of those dollars. Again, now we've got another bucket to deal with and, and, but immediately, I think what's clear, and what's clearest of all that, on the front end from both, from both administrations, frankly, is that the portion, the minimal portions, the minimums that need to go directly to students and is, and those details behind them. So, yes, ma'am, getting those to the students first and foremost, we're dealing with students now, we're dealing with the students that are affected today, who were with us last semester, who were persevered, maybe sat out for summer and, and finished and were with us in spring. So we're dealing with our current students, and so our opportunity, this is what I was talking about earlier, our opportunity and the need to get those dollars out to the current students is, is an imperative, and we've got to move as fast as we can for those.
Other regents, I see Mr. Garza has his mic open.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Eskamia, I like the way that you all move quickly to be able to identify the needs. Two things, you talked about lessons learned. Do you have some sort of plan to write down, basically a playbook, or develop a playbook for an emergency like this, or for future emergencies, to be able to benefit, benefit from the experience that we had on this one in future, I want to say, actions or challenges that we might have?
So, yes, sir.
So we don't have to, we don't have to reinvent the wheel five or 10 years from now, or 20 years from now?
Yes, sir. The playbook, a, a, let's say a playbook is written, so now we're going to have to take the best, what we learned from that playbook that Dr. Wilson and Dr. Silva and Mr. Garcia are talking about. The thing about it is, is each, each issuance, if you will, each stimulus package has a different script. And so, we're going to have to start with that, and we follow to the letter, the law. I mean, we have Mr. Rivetta looking at it from a legal standpoint, Mr. Garcia looking at it from a, from a pennies and dollars and cents standpoint, and then operationally, everybody else is looking at. So we have multiple filters for that. I would say that, I venture to say that there's going to be three different playbooks, because that's the way it's issued to us.
Okay. Then the, the last question I've got is just, in looking at the list, technology by type, we bought a bunch of items, and I would expect that those items were, were necessary in order for us to be able to continue instruction in this environment. But is there a possibility that you can identify those items that were critical in this particular exercise, but might be good to have, or continue to have, or continue to fund going forward because they became such an asset as to say, you know, in five, three years or five years' budget from now, some of those AV cameras or audio equipment or something may need to be replaced because it's no longer functional, but can still, is still needed to serve a purpose that's not COVID-19-related?
Yeah, you're speaking to the permanency of COVID, I, I, that's the way I describe it. What's going to stay with us? I mean, obviously, we had to buy some consumables and those sorts of things that cycle out, have relatively short periods of lifespans and so forth, but what we've done to the infrastructure at the college is, is, is really some of the, some of our greatest opportunities with expanding, expanding access, and I'm going to call it long-term, I don't know if you can call it permanent, it will evolve, everything expires, including, especially technology. But there are some things that have longer lifespans here, longer impacts, longer life, yeah, lifespans here to serve our students and employees. There's lots of those opportunities. I don't have them in head, in my head right now. I know our Chief Information Officer is not available today to discuss those, but they are categorized and we do have, when you're talking about planning and looking forward, those are the things that I look at, you know, what are those long-haul things that provide services and access to Wi-Fi and all of these other kinds of things that outlive, long-outlive a laptop, for instance? So lots of those discussions to come, and we'll bring that back to you in April, or as we move ahead, April, May, and June with these, with these next dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Silva.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Are there any other regent questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our pending item list. It was provided in your board packet. Our April meeting will consist of a follow-up on our board policy review. We're doing some of that today in our action items, but there will be continued work on our board policy review, quarterly investment report, our enrollment report, and a legislative update. And then in May, June, additional workshops on our regional workforce need, and another workshop on our strategic plan, and key performance indicators. Are there any questions about upcoming items?
Just, just to comment, Madam Chair?
Yes.
The number nine and 10 may very well be rolled up into one. They're, they're so close akin that I'm working with Lenora and Dr. Wilson to, to talk about combining those two for efficiency, it's, they're, they're too closely related, maybe not too, so.
Sure.
FYI.
Sure. All right, thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, the board has been provided information regarding our approval of minutes for our February meetings, acceptance of investment and financial reports for February and January respectively. Are there any items that need to be separated out for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt our consent agenda as presented?
I sound moved.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Garza, he waved his hand. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Bennett, I'm not sure if you're still with us via phone? All right, any opposed? Then that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, board members. Moving on to our regular agenda items, we are going to start with a discussion and possible action related to our internal audit. We have some follow-up reports and the status of our FY21 plan. Ms. McDonald?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Today, we will have Dan Graves with Weaver present internal audit follow-up reports under two areas, and also provide status reports on one of our functional areas in student services, and some status reports on some projects, special projects assigned, and then our overall plan status for the FY21 plan. So with that, I will go ahead and turn this over to Dan Graves with Weaver. Dan?
It's Tammy. Hello, regents. Thank you for having me this afternoon. As Tammy said, give you the follow-up reports on two of our follow-ups and status on everything else. So if you go to the next slide, please. Those two follow-up reports are Human Resources Administration and Grants Management, as well as a status on the Student Service Follow-Up Procedures and follow-ups on the two internal audit consulting projects that we have this year over the Policy Project and Grants Administration. The next slide. The first follow-up that you have a full report on is for the Human Resources Follow-Up. We performed our field work for that in February through ICE Week and made it through and had our exit meeting on February 26. The scope of this was purely to follow up on the one open finding from the 2017 internal audit report. If you go to the next slide, please. You'll see on our table there, we did look at, there were nine prior internal audit findings. Eight of those have been closed prior to this year. We closed the one open finding this year due to the fact that we are addressing, a lot of these were to, the one finding was based on some open policy change recommendations that we had made as part of that audit, as part of our fiscal 2021 policy project. We are addressing some of those as well. So we have closed this. We didn't show it as remediated. We did show it as closed because it will be remediated as part of the policy project and the revisions that come out of college policies through that project. So any questions regarding the Human Resources Internal Audit Follow-Up?
I do not see any.
All right, if there are none, I'll proceed to the next slide to talk about grants management. So we did also perform a Grants Management Follow-Up Procedures that started in January, and we completed those in February. Those follow-up procedures again, or the scope of this engagement were purely to follow up on open internal audit findings. And so if you go to the next slide, please. There were six open internal audit findings from the 2019 internal audit. We'll see that all six of those are now partially remediated. We did not perform any internal audit follow-up over those findings in fiscal year 2020. So we performed the initial audit in fiscal year 2019. We didn't perform any in fiscal 2020. Now that we're in 2021, we had confirmed with management that progress has been made, and I want to come to you and tell you that we identified that significant changes have been made as far as it relates to grants management. There has now been a new grant management office that has gone and put a lot of work in to develop policies and procedures and other guidance for the college. A lot of those policies and procedures, well, we took them, we reviewed all of them. A lot of those have yet to be fully put in place or completely issued and taken out of draft form. That is why the changes are to partially remediated instead of completely remediated because we weren't able to see those fully launched out and enacted, and then also to verify that the college is operating based on those new guidance or the new guidelines pushed out through that office, but did want to come back and provide a very positive message to you that there's been a significant amount of work that Mr. Garcia and his team have put through just a, again, a huge effort to start moving the grant management policies and procedures of the college in a very positive direction. And through that implementation of those efforts, the Mr. Garcia has provided us some new implementation dates in the report that were disclosed in the report and updated responses, and that we are recommending that we perform follow-up procedures continuing on in fiscal year 2022. But once these policies and procedures have been put in place and operated, that we will be able to come back and perform procedures to verify that operations over the grant management process are moving on as intended. So any questions related to grants management in that report? If there are none, I'll then move on to Student Services. We're currently in progress. Next slide, please. And next slide. As far as Student Services, we are in the middle of performing follow-up procedures for that 2019 audit. We began those in February and continuing those, took the small break for spring break and are continuing through those procedures. We do expect to be able to issue follow-up report in March. Therefore, we'll be able to present that at the April Board Meeting. The scope of those was to follow up on the open findings from that report and to validate that corrective action had been taken. And so we wanted to provide you a short status for that audit and just let you know that you can anticipate that being brought back to you as far as which findings have closed and if any remain open, that will be anticipated to be next month. Can you go to the next slide, please? That takes us to the, just the status of the, the two consulting activities that we have. One for Policy Project. We've had quite a bit of interaction with the regents over the last several months regarding the Policy Project. We're continuing to work with college administration to talk about changes in the structure and organization of the board policies. All the substantial policy changes, I believe, we discussed at the last workshop. And I think there's an action item on the agenda later today for those. So you're pretty aware of where we're at with that, different consulting project. We do also have on the Internal Audit Plan this year, a Grants Management consulting process. So now that we've completed the follow-up for the, the grant management findings from the prior internal audit, we did include some consulting activities for Grants Management on our plan to be able to aid the Office of Grants Management to be able to continue making forward progress. And we're coordinating with Mr. Garcia on what the scope of that would look like and where we can most, provide the most benefit to the college in helping, whether that's review some other policies, develop some training materials, what that might look like, and we'll be able to present that scope back to you in the near future as well. So if you go back to the next slide, please. This is just an overall view of the various projects and audit follow-ups that we have. We've discussed the Policy Project and Grants Administration and presented to you the first three of our follow-ups. We still have purchasing, admissions and registrar, and some IT general control follow-ups to check in with management to see where they're at and then perform any follow-ups if those areas are ready to have follow-ups performed. We are touching base with the administrators and college management in those areas to confirm the preparedness for those, and we'll be performing those throughout the remainder of this fiscal year. That concludes my plan remarks as far as the update. Do you want to open up if there are any questions from the regents about the internal audit plan or the audits today?
Thank you very much, Dan and Ms. McDonald. Regents, do you have any questions or comments? This does require an action from the board to accept the internal audit follow-up report and status updates. Is there a motion to that effect? Dr. Adami makes that motion. Is there a second?
I would second.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Any questions on that motion? If not, all those regents in favor of accepting the internal audit follow-up reports and status updates as presented, please raise your hand. Mr. Bennett, are you on the line? I don't hear him. All right, that, anyone opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Regents, we'll now move on to our discussion and possible action related to board policy and board bylaws regarding our board committees. Ms. McDonald is going to review the new board policy for the structure of our board committees. And then Mr. Rivera will review the bylaws changes that coincide with those, with those changes as well. Ms. McDonald?
Yes, thank you, Chair. As we reviewed and discussed in the February board workshop for our fiscal year 21 policy project, part of that work, the workshop, was to bring a new board policy forward for the structure in, of the board committees. So today, for your consideration and adoption, we are presenting a new policy. It's B 2.1.6 titled Structure for Board of Regents Committees, and the adoption date would be today, if you so pass it. And it's a very short policy. It just basically says you have a structure, go look at your bylaws. So, but we, I know that the, the board wanted something in policy so that we could refer back to the bylaws. So I'm presenting this today for your consideration and adoption.
Thank you very much, Ms. McDonald. Are there questions related to the draft policy as presented? Is there a motion to adopt the draft policy as presented, policy B 2.1.6?
I'm sorry, but before we get to that,
Yes.
That last sentence, actually, there's a word in there, right? It believes that the board will be formed in accordance with the by.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Can you state?
It should be bylaws.
Yes. So, no, it should be, we need to, the board would perform in accordance with the Delmar College District Board Bylaw. So the BY should not be in there. Be removed. If you want to approve that by striking the "by." Thank you.
So I'll make that motion if that's appropriate.
Thank you. With that, with that grammatical error, then Ms. Hutchinson makes the motion to adopt the structure for the Board of Regents Committees. And second by Dr. Adami. Thank you very much. Any discussion related to that motion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. The next item will be then the corresponding bylaws changes, and Mr. Rivera is going to cover those for us.
Thank you, Regent Scott. Board members, in your packet is a proposed set of board bylaws that are consistent with your prior recommendations you received from the internal auditors as well as input from you and further review by staff. You'll see we've got six items that are there. Anybody can just go through them briefly. A, the chair of the Board of Regents may establish committees as needed, and the board shall establish the committee charter for any such established committee. B, within the first quarter of an odd-numbered year, the board will review and determine whether to operate as a committee of the whole or to establish board committees. Irrespective of the established committee composition cycle, the board may create or dissolve committees as it deems appropriate. C, the board chair is authorized to appoint committee members, designate the chair of the committees, and determine committee term limits. The CEO of the college may serve as ex officio of each board committee and may also appoint staff liaisons. D, all committees shall constitute less than a quorum of the board and operate under the authority of the Board of Regents. A standing or special board committee must have at least two regents present in order to advance items to be forwarded to the full Board of Regents. If non-committee board member attendance at a committee meeting results in a quorum of the board, the committee meeting shall be conducted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. E, the chair of each board committee will ensure that minutes will be taken, and the minutes of each committee meeting will be shared with each committee member and posted and maintained in the same manner as other board minutes. And F, committees may establish their own procedures for conducting business unless otherwise directed by the board.
Thank you very much.
Ready to answer any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Rivera. Regents, do you think this accomplishes, we've been discussing over the past few months? Any questions for Mr. Rivera, any suggested changes? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the proposed bylaw revisions?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Ms. Everett. Sarah, second? Second by Dr. Adami. I'm gonna say second by Dr. Turner. I'm gonna give, give that one to her. All right, all those in favor of adopting the proposed bylaw revisions as presented, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. And then we will go back to, actually, Mr. Rivera is going to present on my behalf the potential charter, a resolution establishing an audit committee and the charter for that audit committee. And the same process for an ad hoc bylaws review committee and the charter for that committee. So let's take those one at a time, Mr. Rivera, and see if the board has any questions regarding the documents for each. Let's start with the ad hoc, excuse me, let's start with the audit committee.
Certainly. Thank you, Regent Scott. Board members, again, as a result of the hard work and thought that you have all put into reviewing your committees and deciding what you think would be most appropriate for you at this time, we have prepared two different resolutions and committee charters for, number one, the establishment of a board audit committee, and then, number two, for the establishment of an ad hoc committee on bylaws. The first, on the audit committee, you'll see the resolution, but I want to make sure that you also have a chance to review the committee charter because that's got the details. It's pretty straightforward. I will tell you the committee charter was arrived at with a lot of input from both Ms. McDonald and Mr. Garcia, as well as with oversight reviewed by Dr. Eskamia. We tried to take everything that we had heard from you in terms of what you wanted and put that into the charter. And so now before you is a resolution establishing a standing audit committee. And if you'll indulge me, let me read that to you. It's rather short. Whereas the Delmar College District Board of Regents operates under duly adopted bylaws to provide rules for the operation of the board and the conduct of the regents, whereas the bylaws authorize the board and/or the board chair to establish board committees as needed and to confer appropriate authority to the committees, whereas the board believes it would be helpful to the board and the college administration to appoint and engage a standing audit committee for the purpose of providing assistance to the board in fulfilling its oversight responsibilities for the financial reporting process, the system of internal control over financial reporting, external and internal audit processes, and the college's process for monitoring compliance with the laws and regulations. Now therefore be it resolved that in accordance with the bylaws of the Board of Regents of the Delmar College District and applicable law, the board hereby authorizes and approves the establishment of a standing audit committee of the board and further authorizes the board chair to appoint the chair and members of the audit committee. I don't know if you want to go over the specifics. Perhaps you can get those up on the screen, the committee charters, or the committee charter for the audit committee, which is the next document. Thank you.
Yes, I would like to review that in tandem, and then we can go back and adopt the resolution, but I wanted the board to be aware of the charter.
Right. So if you take a look, board members, at the charter, and we'll tell you right now that in reviewing other audit committee charters, there are those that were, that are a heck of a lot more detailed and long and extensive, probably too much for this. It was a little bit like the Goldilocks and the Three Bears, you know, that one was too much and one was too little, so we hopefully have come up with the one that fits your needs. But you'll see the specific goals of the audit committee. Composition, we'll start with that, that the audit committee will begin, will be made up of no less than three and no more than four members of the board to be appointed by the chair of the Board of Regents. The chair of the committee will also be appointed by the chair of the Board of Regents. The meetings will be at least once every three months, quarterly. That's what's expected. They shall go into executive session in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act and other confidentiality standards, envisioning that there will be times when the audit committee itself will be discussing sensitive matters that we want, we want to maintain the confidentiality of. And the committee will be assisted by the college president, CEO, the CFO, the VP of Administration and HR, and General Counsel. And the college CFO and the VP of Administration and HR will serve as staff liaisons to the committee. Going over the specific goals you see there, the committee will be expected Going over the specific goals you see there, the committee will be expected to review the engagement letters for the current fiscal year audit. They'll review the results of the annual financial audit for the external auditor and management, including any difficulties encountered, and monitor the completion of the recommendations. They'll monitor the college's system of internal controls, including computerized information system controls and security, the adequacy of financial accounting and operational policies and practices related to financial reporting, and the process for monitoring compliance with laws and regulation. They'll review internal audit reports and responses and monitor the completion of recommendations. They'll review and approve the internal audit process and governance documents related to internal audit activities at the college. They'll review the effectiveness of the internal audit function, including its organizational structure, and they'll confirm that there are no unjustified restrictions or limitations. And then finally, they'll be expected to prepare and provide an annual report to the Board of Regents and shall provide additional reports as needed. They may be made to the board in executive session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Sorry, there are two others on the next page. The audit committee is expected to consult with the college's internal and external auditors and staff in carrying out its work. And the audit committee, in consultation with the college's general counsel, shall protect the confidentiality of information deemed confidential under law. So we think this provides a very practical and very clear and blueprint for the operation of the audit committee. And stand prepared to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rivera. Questions or comments from the board? You all are way too accommodating today. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the establishment of an audit committee and the draft charter therein. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion by Mr. Garza. Is there a second to that motion? Dr. Adami? All those in favor of the adoption of the resolution to establish the audit committee and the charter therein, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Thank you very much. That motion is adopted. Now, Mr. Rivera, would you please review the motion to establish an ad hoc bylaws review committee and the charter?
Sure. Thank you very much, Regent Scott. Again, for you veterans in the board, this is, we've done this before and you're doing it again, and I, I think it's a good thing. And after much discussion about how to take this up, the time is appropriate because, and you'll see that the review, the bylaws review is sort of tied to what you've been doing and will provide an opportunity in a formal way to make sure that your, that all of your bylaws are in harmony with each other, in addition to looking at some other things perhaps in a new way. But the resolution that's been prepared, again, based on your input and prior direction, reads as follows. Whereas the Delmar College District Board of Regents operates under duly adopted bylaws to provide rules for the operation of the board and the conduct of the regents, and whereas the bylaws authorize the board and/or the board chair to establish board committees as needed and to confer appropriate authority to the committees, and whereas in the fall of 2012, an ad hoc bylaws committee of the board conducted a review of the Delmar College Board bylaws and statement of conduct and ethics and proposed changes that were adopted by the board, whereas the board believes it would be helpful to the board and the college administration to appoint and engage an ad hoc bylaws committee for the purpose of reviewing the board's bylaws and statement of conduct and ethics and peer best practices for harmony, relevancy, efficacy, and consistency, and providing the board with a report of its reviews, of its review, including recommendations, if any, to the board at the September 2021 board meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that in accordance with the bylaws of the Board of Regents of the Delmar College District and applicable law, the board hereby authorizes and approves the establishment of an ad hoc bylaws committee and further authorizes the board chair to appoint the chair and members of the ad hoc bylaws committee. We could go to the next page and see the committee charter for this proposed committee. You'll see that it tracks the resolution. The purpose of the ad hoc bylaws committee is to assist the board by conducting a review of the board's bylaws and statement of conduct and ethics for harmony, relevancy, efficacy, and consistency, and providing the board with a final report of its work, including recommendations, if any. Specific goals, the ad hoc bylaws committee will review and evaluate the current bylaws and statement of conduct and ethics, including a review of peer best practices and a comparison with other community college bylaws. The ad hoc bylaws committee will prepare a final report of its work, including its findings and recommendations, if any, and will present its report to the board at the September 2021 board meeting. The board may extend the time for the ad hoc bylaws committee to complete its work and final report. That gives you an opportunity there in case the work of the committee needs to go longer. The ad hoc bylaws committee will be made up of no less than three and no more than four members of the board to be appointed by the chair of the Board of Regents. The chair of the committee will also be appointed by the chair of the Board of Regents. Meetings, the ad hoc bylaws committee will meet as needed and the committee will be assisted by the college general counsel, who will serve as staff liaison.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera.
Yes, Regent Scott, I'm ready to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Mr. Rivera? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to establish an ad hoc bylaws committee and the charter therein?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Ms. Everett. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Garza. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Regents, I would like to announce the individuals that I proposed to be members of each of these committees. And if there are any changes to those based on, because not everyone is in attendance today, but based on their acceptance of those positions, if there's any changes of those, I'll report those back to you at the April meeting. I intend to ask Mr. Bennett to chair the audit committee with members Regent Garza and myself. And I'm asking Regent Everett to chair the ad hoc bylaws committee with members Regent Turner and Regent Hutchinson. So if there's any concerns about those, and again, I'll confirm with Mr. Bennett, since he was not able to be with us today, that those, those are the appointments for those committees. Thank you all for your work on this. I especially want to thank our general counsel for his assistance in drafting these resolutions and the, the charters therein. I do want to also thank Ms. McDonald and folks from Weaver for their assistance in our policy and review over the past several months. Anything else related to this agenda item? All right, that concludes our regular agenda. The board is now going to enter into closed session and please allow me to read our closed session language. We're going to go into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 regarding pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer with a possible discussion and action in open session and the seeking of legal advice from counsel on pending legal or contemplated matters or claims with possible discussion and action in open session. Also, Texas Government Code 551.072 regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property and the possible discussion, action, and open session. And Texas Government Code 551.074A1 regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, employee, including number one, the Regent three, the District three Regent appointment to the Delmar College Board of Regents, number two, the annual evaluation of the college president and president's contract, and number three, the annual board self-evaluation with possible discussion and action in open session. The time is 2:58 PM. We'll take about a five minute break to clear the virtual room and allow our regents to take a quick break. Thank you. We have come out of closed session at 3:56 PM with no action items. We are going to review our calendar for upcoming dates. Did that calendar get sent in advance? I don't think we have anything between now and our next board meeting. I think that is correct. I'm sorry, Friday selection meeting at, we're going to have a call to special board meeting at 9:00 AM on Friday for the interview and selection of a Regent to fulfill the unexpired term for District three. And then our next board meeting will be on Tuesday, April 13th. If there is nothing else, for the good of the cause, we will adjourn our meeting at 3:57 PM. Thank you all very much.